Oh, alright, the session is in recording, so very good. After evening or good morning in the case of Kim. Welcome to this session where we for our class, this section is. MHPA two two four three is a master's course for student development. Now, we're very happy today to have Jason on board to share. What he knows about learning, so I've put up Jason's profile on. The evening page guess to let you guys have a look on what is the profile about. Think the rest of you might have seen this already. Yeah, uh, sorry, seeing a different thing, okay, this should be. The e-learning page. And then at the bottom. This is Jason's. Poster, I've also included his CV. And you can have a look at it, so without taking up more time than I should. I think I'm going to pass it over to Jason, Jason, the floor is yours.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Jason. The person I invite here is Ken, he's my uncle, I call him Uncle Ken. So the whole program here was actually kind of inspired by him. During my childhood days where he started a school called Active Thinking School. Where he used to taught to young childrens. To creative thinking and how to remember things in a very effective way and joyful way to learn math. And I also realized during my years of study, they are my peers, my classmates. Who are much better than I am or who don't do as good in the studies as I am. And realize I studied their patterns, their behavior, yeah, there are some differences that I can draw. And when I look back in my childhood, how I study and referencing some books, some online sources. This is how I come up with some techniques that I find very useful for. People who want to learn in a very fast and effective way, where we can remember things better and in a. Fun and joyful way. So next, I would like to start the presentation with this golden circle. Let's play a video.
Jason, Jason, can you reshare your slide? I think we haven't, because I shared my screen just now, so that's why. Your slide is not on on the session, okay?
Okay.
Correct, okay.
So I will play this video about the Golden Circle. Give me a moment. Is a talk, Ted Talk from Simon Sinek. Can you hear the sound?
Unfortunately, when you reshare just now, you click on a box about sharing computer audio. Probably that that is the reason why.
Yes.
Okay, but we couldn't hear, sorry.
Sorry, I'm more familiar with you.
I know, I was about to mention the same thing as well. Probably if you want to unshare, then reshare and then click on a box that says share of computer audio, that might help. Would you like me to play the video?
Yes, maybe I send you the YouTube link.
Yeah, yeah, then I can play for my side. Or you can copy the YouTube link into the chat function and then I'll play for my side.
Yeah, you can play until six minutes.
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
So hold on, yeah, it's okay, hold on, let me. Okay, I'm going to share my screen, computer audio. And share. You should be able to see a screen at the moment. Okay, let's do this. And then.
So where do you start when you have a?
Just to check, can you hear the audio? Can everyone else hear the audio? Yes. Okay, so I'm going to continue clicking.
Program that's about integrating life's passions. Well, you start with why? Why? And that kicks us off for the first speaker tonight, Simon Sinek in his talk, Start With Why.
We assume even, we know why we do what we do. But then how do you explain when things don't go as we assume? Or better, how do you explain when others are able to achieve things that seem to defy all of the assumptions? For example, why is Apple so innovative? Year after year after year after year, they're more innovative than all their competition. And yet they're just a computer company, they're just like everyone else. They have the same access to the same talent, the same agencies, the same consultants, the same media. Then why is it that they seem to have something different? Why is it that Martin Luther King led the civil rights movement? He wasn't the only man who suffered in a pre-civil rights America. And he certainly wasn't the only great orator of the day, why him? And why is it that the Wright Brothers were able to figure out controlled powered man flight? When there were certainly other teams who were better qualified, better funded. And they didn't achieve powered man flight, and the Wright Brothers beat them to it. There's something else at play here. About three and a half years ago, I made a discovery. And this discovery profoundly changed my view. On how I thought the world worked and it even profoundly changed the way in which I operate in it. As it turns out, there's a pattern, as it turns out, all the great and inspiring leaders and organizations in the world. Whether it's Apple or Martin Luther King or the Wright Brothers, they all think, act and communicate the exact same way. And it's the complete opposite to everyone else. All I did was codify it. And it's probably the world's simplest idea, I call it the golden circle. Why, how, what? This little idea explains why some organizations and some leaders are able to inspire where others aren't. Let me define the terms really quickly. Every single person, every single organization on the planet knows what they do, one hundred percent. Some know how they do it, whether you call it your differentiation value proposition or your proprietary process or your USP. But very, very few people or organizations know why they do what they do. And by why, I don't mean to make a profit, that's a result, it's always a result. By why, I mean, what's your purpose, what's your cause, what's your belief? Why does your organization exist? Well, as a result, the way we think, the way we act, the way we communicate is from the outside in, it's obvious. We go from the clearest thing to the fuzziest thing. But the inspired leaders and the inspired organizations, regardless of their size, regardless of their industry. All think, act and communicate from the inside out. Let me give you an example, I use Apple because they're easy to understand and everybody gets it. If Apple were like everyone else, a marketing message from them might sound like this. We make great computers. They're beautifully designed, simple to use and user friendly. Want to buy one? Meh. And that's how most of us communicate, that's how most marketing is done, that's how most sales is done. And that's how most of us communicate interpersonally, we say what we do, we say how we're different or how we better. And we expect some sort of behavior, a purchase, a vote, something like that. Here's our new law firm, we have the best lawyers with the biggest clients, we have, you know, we always perform for our clients, do business with us. Here's our new car, it gets great gas mileage, it has leather seats, buy our car. But it's uninspiring, here's how Apple actually communicates. Everything we do, we believe in challenging the status quo, we believe in thinking differently. The way we challenge the status quo is by making our products beautifully designed, simple to use and user friendly. We just happen to make great computers, want to buy one? Totally different, right? You're ready to buy a computer from me? All I did was reverse the order of the information, people don't buy what you do, people buy why you do it. People don't buy what you do, they buy why you do it. This explains why every single person in this room is perfectly comfortable buying a computer from Apple. But we're also perfectly comfortable buying an MP3 player from Apple or a phone from Apple or a DVR from Apple. But as I said before, Apple's just a computer company, there's nothing that distinguishes them structurally from any of their competitors. Their competitors are all equally qualified to make all of these products. In fact, they tried, a few years ago Gateway came out with flat screen TVs. They're eminently qualified to make flat screen TVs, they've been making flat screen monitors for years. Nobody bought one. Dell came out with MP3 players and PDAs. And they make great quality products and they can make perfectly well-designed products. And nobody bought one. In fact, talking about it now, we can't even imagine buying an MP3 player from Dell, why would you buy an MP3 player from a computer company? But we do it every day. People don't buy what you do, they buy why you do it. The goal is not to do business with anybody, with everybody who needs what you have. The goal is to do business with people who believe what you believe.
Can we can stop here?
None of what I'm telling you is my.
Alright, let me stop sharing and then, yeah, passing it over to you.
Okay, so you might be wondering why I share this video and how does it relate to you as a future educator? I want you to start thinking, why do you do what you do and what's your purpose? Why do you access in this education field? And then only by start thinking, begin with a why. You can start to think how to deliver a content, how to teach your students. And then what should you do next and what do you want your future students to do? This is a very good way by crafting the content related to your student. Rather than we just feed the student with information and they just get the input from you. Because I believe learning is not an input, rather it is an output. So today I'm going to share with you how we can remember more effectively. So Buckminster Fuller said that if you want to teach people a new way of thinking, don't bother trying to teach them. Instead, give them a tool, the use of which will lead to new ways of thinking. And so this is exactly what I'm going to do today. Give you a collection of techniques which will lead us to new ways of thinking to open our mind. So that you can orchestrate into your learning and teaching in the future. So let's begin by understanding yourself. Based on this book, there are four C connections, concepts, concrete and conclusion. The four Cs sitting here are not in particular order in my opinion. So when we teach, we can even start with a conclusion. Then we go into connections and formulate a concept, followed by providing concrete ideas or points of other of the concept. You may even start with any either of these four. And then you can see how you can deliver the content. So now I would like you to recall how did we learn when we were children? You go back deep into your childhood, your memories and start to feel. How did we learn to talk, to walk, to swim, ride a bicycle, music or math? Have you ever wondered sometimes why couldn't I remember the things I have learned? And how many times have you remembered the answer only when you walk out from the examination hall? And you feel that it's such a base. Because you studied it and you just couldn't come up with the answer during the exam. And so is there a way that everyone can learn more effectively? The next is you need to understand ourself. So through some self dialogue and self reflection, are you a morning, afternoon, evening and night person? Generally, we can divide twenty four hours in the day into. From twelve AM to six AM is in the morning. From six AM to twelve PM afternoon, twelve PM to six PM the evening. And the night time is six PM to twelve AM. You need to know that from your own experience, which of these six hours are most productive to you? And each six hours we can further divide into half, into three hours each and into one point five hours each. And then you need to know when does your brain perform best? That is your best peak performance period. You use that period to do productive work, you can study, you can even do your work, like maybe write a thesis, so on and so forth. The next is you think back whether you are a visual learner, auditory, kinesthetic type of learner. Because each person learn differently. And then between monotasking and multitasking, which is better. Studies have shown monotasking tends to perform better than multitask. Where our brain can focus on one single mode rather than switching between tasks. And that will drain our energy very fast. And what is the easiest and hardest thing for you to remember? For example, you do remember numbers better, do you remember text better? Or remember maybe English, Chinese or your own native language Malay or Hindi? Maybe French, Spanish, which is easiest for you to remember, you can remember like music, songs, lyrics. And which word describe you better? Are you a dreamer? Are you a doer? Are you a planner? Are you a talker or thinker? So these are some of the learning styles that different people have, they can be visual, musical, auditory, verbal. Physical, kinesthetic, where you prefer sense of touch and you need to do. Work in order to know things, experiment. And then logical, mathematical, where you deal with logic, reasoning and systems. Or you prefer social, where you study in groups, you learn through discussion with other people. Or you prefer to study alone, maybe it could be more effective for you. So what is your learning style? So today our study session will include this learning pyramid. But I will do up to practice doing. So from lecture, reading, audio visual demonstration, discussion, practicing doing and. For you to hopefully inspire you to teach others in a better way, the under the active learning. This is the Lion King movie. I'm not sure how many of you know this because I know you are very young. So I would like to present you learning the lion way. So for lion. Studies has shown that people retain information better when they study under the conditions of slight hunger. While moving and a slightly colder temperature room. These conditions create a sense of urgency and a crisis, same like the lion when they are hungry. And then they will tend to. Go into a mode of survival and they know that they need to go out there and hunt. Otherwise, the whole pride of lions and the lion cubs will be in hunger. So I would recommend that we don't study something or we don't do a task that need our focus mode after meals. Let's say after breakfast, after lunch or after dinner. That time it would be better for us to rest. So we we try to maximize our time to learn something more effectively. There are many students who spend like six to eight hours all day in the room in the library, but then. Little has come into their brain that after they studied all day, maybe they could not remember everything that they study. So the next will be lion often pace or move around while hunting. This is kind of like a warm up to their body and they are ready as ever to pounce on the prey. And they can ambush, so this trigger a part of our brain we call hippocampus. To produce the theta wave which enhances our memory. So looking back in my school days where when I wait for the car to pick me up. Sometimes I walk to the school and walk back from school, I study and I memorize things while walking. And there's, you might want to try another technique, I'm not sure it will for you, I study when I shower. So I put a piece of clear folder, I splash some water on the wall and I paste it there. I put my notes there and then I start memorizing things. Because to me during shower is the most refreshed time. It can be very effective, but you need to try on your own to know whether it suits you or not. The next is lion will feel a sense of urgency when the temperature of the surrounding starts to cool down. It signals cold weather and tougher hunting conditions. So similar to us, it can boost our learning efficiently. So we tend to study, we would, I would recommend you to study in air conditioned rooms. And not in a hot temperature where you tend to feel more sweaty and you couldn't focus a lot. And by doing so, right? Over the years, over time, your brain condition yourself to. In a snap of a finger or in a blink of an eye, you can switch to a peak performance mode. And as time passed by. When you are always able to switch in this peak performance mode. You will know that you are in a state of flow. Where things start to flow very easily, where you can write, where you can remember things, where you can do math in a faster way. You may encounter a similar scenario in the exam hall, maybe it could be in the last twenty minutes. But you know there are still a lot of questions or you still have a big chunk of essay that you haven't completed. In the last spring, you can finish a lot. I I believe everyone and everyone has gone through this experience before. So this is over the, this is to condition your brain to always perform in a peak state. If you tend to study when you are tired, when you don't feel like, when you don't feel motivated to study. The same way the brain will be conditioned that you will be in that state. Yeah, I hope it makes sense to you. So next, this is in Chinese, but I will translate, so sorry, I I don't have enough time to do this. Okay, so I have, I have explained hunger, movement and lowering the temperature. The next is interest. When we are interested in certain things, our body will go into excited mode. It is, you have a sense of euphoria where your brain will start to exhibit a theta wave. And this will further stimulate the hippocampus and it enhance your memory better. So next is the emotion recall or emotion overturning. There's a part in our brain that looks like an almond, it's called amygdala, so this helps to. Process our emotions in particular fear and pleasure as well as in your memory and decision making. When you incorporate not only your visual sense, your hearing sense. When to study. Ah, okay. You incorporate all the five senses, including your sense of smell, sense of maybe touch. And your taste and even one more sense, which is your emotions and feelings. It tends to enhance and boost your memory much better. Because you will always remember things in your deepest memory where. Emotions and feelings are strongest, be it you are most disappointed, you are very sad, you are very angry. You are very happy and you are embarrassed, so these are some of the emotions that. You can incorporate when learning things, I will talk more about this later. So don't think this like you are going on, you are going crazy or you're going to resort to fear. So this is like using emotions to help you and then next is sleep. Everyone knows that we need ample rest time, like maybe six to eight hours per day. But this is not what I want to share about, what I want to share about is. To use the time right before your bedtime, maybe like half an hour or even fifty minutes before your bedtime. Where your body go into a relaxed mode before you sleep. That's when after you study, you read, you learn something and then you go to sleep. Your brain will start to reinforce your memory during your sleep time. This is most people have all of this, but there's another, and one more is I want to share further is. The moment right after you spring up from sleep, the moment you wake up, don't try to snooze your phone and you spring up from bed. You try, either you try to recall what you have learned in the. Previous night or you start to learn something new. Because in these two states, right before sleep and right after sleep, you wake up from sleep. These two states are in, you are in a limbo, like where your brain goes into a conscious and semi-conscious. And that's where you can assess to potential that you can never imagine. I share with you one personal experience was it happened in my uni first year. Where we need to check results from the portal. And then I forget my PIN number, I couldn't remember the password. And before I go to sleep, I start to think. In this sleep by tomorrow morning, I need to remember the password, otherwise it's very difficult for me. I because I need to go to the student affair office and then. To tell them this, because the next day I I need to go back to KL already, because I studied in Singapore last time. So in the next morning when I wake up, there's a six number coming to my mind, I'm not sure if it's the PIN number. But I just tried and it works. So at that moment, I know this worked for me. And then when I look back during my high school, I like to study on the bed. I lie on the bed, I study, which is not good for posture of course, but then there's tend to be, I'm very tired, but I tend to go into a more of. Sleep, study, sleep, study, stick, study, stick, study. But amazingly, I know this is not, I suggest to you, but I'm just telling you this concept. Amazingly, right, things get into my brain very easy and can remember things very well. So the methods, techniques I share with you or you are going to share with your future students. You need to see whether it suits you or not, it works for certain people and it may not work for another group of people. You need to experiment yourself. Then the last is stress relief, you need to in a relaxed mode for you to. Remember things better or I can say extract things from your brain during your exam time. Because when you are in pressure mode, sometimes we just couldn't get the things out in the brain through the pen. So at some, so there are times in the exam hall, I will just put down my pen, I will just rest my brain like just for like one minute. Yeah, and then after I open my eyes, yeah, things start to come into the brain again. So don't, don't, don't rush into that, yeah, I cannot finish, there's not enough time for me. Yeah, okay, so next. So these are the different eight methods, I summarize the first hunger. So these are different eight methods. I summarize the first hunger, the next motion, and one cold. Fourth interest, emotion, sleep. Did not only empower rest, but you tap into your subconscious state. And the next is revision. And relax, revision. I am going to touch now, there's a there's a study called this forgetting curve by Ebbinghaus. So it's it's an influential memory model that shows how learn informations leaks. Out of our memories over time unless we take effort and take action to retain the memory. So how does this work? So for example, in the first day of learning, you first learn a new skill, new knowledge. And then right after you come back from school, you do your immediate recall. So what do I mean by immediate recall? You get your notebook or a piece of A four paper, you start writing on it. What do you remember about what teacher taught in class? Without going through your textbook to see what are the things that you can recall. And then. You do your first revision, you open your book and then revise the part. And then three days after you do your second revision. Before the end of week, by the sixth or seventh day, you do your third revision and you stop there. And three weeks later, you only do your fourth revision. By doing this, you can combat. The for forgive uh forget, the the knowledge forget stick off of your brain. So it retains your memory better. Uh since more, but I I I don't practice this often because I am not a very hardworking student back then. My mom taught me even be before the teachers start to teach in class, you go through the books. And that's your first time. You start to study the new knowledge. And then you go to school, when you listen to the teacher, you pay attention. That's the second time when a rush going to your mind. That time. Not only reinforce what you learn, but it also help to clear your doubts. And any queries you have from the content and you can start to ask teachers question. Uh and then by the end of the week, you study again. By the way, my mom was not very highly educated. But he taught me things like this, which after many years when I as I grow up to a teenager, I feel. He is she is really very amazing in this. And next uh show and tell. So when we learn things, we learn as if. We want to teach the other people, we don't only learn for ourselves. We learn as if that we are going to teach to another person. This show and tell is an educational activity and is very famous in the western schools. Where they have young children to bring an item or share an experience, it could be their holiday, their weekend activity. Could be a a team park, a trip with their family and then they share a story that to eat. So this practice help develop speaking and listening skill and also boost confidence. And encourage peer interaction and where they can crystallize their experience and knowledge into words. Which is very important because if we couldn't crystallize the knowledge we learn into words. And next level will be into text where you write. And when you write, people, you must make sure people understand even without your presence. And that's where book come from. So this is very powerful. So uh you can try after you teach something. You ask someone from the class to come up outside and then start to teach again. Which I did that during my primary school, uh during uh during my teaching experience in a primary school. Oh next, it come the fun part, okay, all the cherry pop we end there already. So this person Harvard say we learn at your best when you have something you care about and can get pleasure. In being engaged in. And this is when we go back to our childhood is daytime. So the brain are like all other muscles in our body require constant workup to get stronger. And I wouldn't go into this, I I assume that you have go through things like this before. Okay, uh have anyone seen this? Can recall, what is this?
Inside out.
Yes, correct. It's a movie inside out and this is the memory of. Okay, because there are some video issue, I wouldn't play the clip here. Okay, so in reality, our memories are not stored in this creek. Meaning to individual memory of like this. So they are actually interconnected to each other like a neural network. You can think like a tree branch. And as we recall a memory. The more we reinforce the linkage in between the neurons. And when the linkage become thicker and thicker, that's where it's very easy. To trace back all the linkage and to find all the information that we need. So this is like when we go to a library to take up a book. The more we walk through the path along the library to this shelf. To this rack and to this shelf and we screen through the books and we get the book. The more we get the book, because maybe we can only borrow the books for two weeks. After two weeks. You need to come into library and get the books again. So the more we go through this process, we don't even need to look at all the label at the shelf. And the labor at the vet, we just know where to assess this book. So this is the same, our how our brain works. Oh, I don't want to go into this. Okay, then now come to how does our memory work? Now talk about the brain. So the first thing is when we acquire information, where we encode. This piece of information into one part of the brain and we index it. So it's easy for us to find back by a grocery. The next it goes into storage, where our brains start to store this piece of information. And is the retention stage of the memory. The next will be retriever where you extract this information from the brain and this is the output. So like input, storage and output. We need to understand. Not only when we learn and as we teach other people, our learners. Which of this memory process they have difficulty. Some people, they it's very hard for them to acquire new information because they don't understand this. This new knowledge that you teach them, it perhaps it could be too complex. It could be this explanation does not suit them, where we need to change another explanation. Or we can give an analogy, we can tell them a story, we can share a past experience of. Yes, where they encountered before, so so on and so forth. As we learn, there's a base of knowledge. And as we learn new knowledge. It's stacked on this base. So it's like knowledge stacking from all the base, all the bases. Into the tips and this is how it form the neural network in the brain. And then next, if this if the issue is in storage where they couldn't remember things. This is where we can share them, how can we store information? Better and longer and lasting. And then the last is retriever and how can we extract this information? Without identifying which part of this memory process that a person is facing issue. It is going to be very difficult for us and for the learner itself. To be able to remember the things that they learn. So in Chinese, memory is called ji, yi is formed by two words. Ji is the part where we encode. So we program into our brain. And yi is the process that we extract, we start to recall the memory. Okay, and in in between, there's a short term memory is like our computer, our RAM. After we shut down the computer, any files they are not safe, they are gone. So this is. Like when a person tell you a phone number, tell you their names, you will tend to. Repeat, repeat in the brain or start to murmur in your mouth. And then before you get to your desk and write in a piece of paper, so this is your RAM. And then through your rehearsal, through multiple iterations of revision, that's where you start to encode into your brain. Okay. So I would like to uh like to share some memory activation techniques by your uh sensors. So the first you can visualize. Associate, associate is linking, you associate A with B, B with C. And then you get to assess C through A, through the linking of B. So anything similar items you can group together, things that sounds like you can put together. Numbers that look like you can merge, combine together. And then repeat. Okay, uh before I go to repeat, so for associate, like for example. Uh let's say there are ten numbers in the phone number or in the fax number. Then you remember, you don't remember individual of the phone number, it could be pair them, it could be three or two before together. And then you only if you remember three together, you only need to remember three, three, one. So it's only three, 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 one, it's only four group rather than ten different groups. So repeat. And then using your emotions, linking queue. Then uh okay, this diverge and converge. This is uh you imagine you open your brain like a parachute. You open, you close back on an umbrella, umbrella. So it's a diverse thinking and converge thinking. When we start to brainstorm, we go diverge. After the brainstorm process, when we need to crystallize and you to filter out those ideas that we want to keep, then we start to converge. Okay, so like uh for example, you study a chapter of the book, it's like a diverge, you start to start study the whole thing. Then there are a few key points that we want to converge. These are the points that you want to retake. And then mnemonics is uh you use a certain method like the first letter of. Uh first letter of maybe a series of texts to remember things. So colors, where you put colors in your memory. It or you can even put black and white. So later I will I I will demonstrate this in the storytelling. You can use mind mapping because our brain works like a map, it's like a neural network. Where you like a tree branch structure. And then uh memory palace, uh this one is a topic on its own. Then homophonic means that sounds like, and then uh extreme where you start to exaggerate things. That it is going to be so big, so red. Uh is going to shrink so small, so little, or so ugly. So beautiful, so nice, so on and so forth, okay? Oh, uh this is the memo mnemonics we shared, I shared earlier, it's like when we remember the order of operations in math. We do parenthesis brackets first, then exponents, multiply, divide, add and subtract. So it's like please excuse my dear unsady. Or we use to ma- memorize the planets in the solar system. Last time we used that photo, but we now don't have it now because it classified as a dwarf planet. So we use my very educated mother just serve us naturals. So Mercury, Venus, Earth, Mars, Jupiter, Saturn, Uranus and Neptune. Or like this might goes specific measurable, achievable, realistic and time bound. And have any one of you remember how we remember the months in a year? Like how our teachers taught us in school, based on the peaks and the troughs of our palm. So we can know January is the one on the peak, that's thirty first day, thirty one days. And then followed by thirty eight days, February is a special one, then the rest thirty days, thirty one days, so on and so forth. So this is how we can remember. So all these are certain techniques that we learn. So uh next. I I will share, there are fifteen words here taken from random word generator. I will share different kind of methods to remember things like this. Of course, there are many ways to remember the same thing. And there are different, different ways to remember different things. And you need to have. Different ways to remember different things in order to learn effectively. Do not use the same way to remember the different things. A lot of students, they tend to memorize pure memorizing book and it's going to be very. Tough on them, they feel very stressful. And then they could not remember that very, very long. Is maybe it's enough to last them to finish the exams, but after the exams, they remember they forget everything. Okay, so they are rocket, constellation, seahorse, coral, cobweb, reef, brick, park, maze, marker, pops. Zero clam meal cucumber and present. So method one is based on category, like I mentioned earlier, ten numbers, you can correct four, four, two, three, 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 one. Or even five of twos. So it's good for non-sequential list, meaning to say the things that remember, you don't need to have an order. You can jumble out the sequence and you don't need to have a logical approach. And you can define the grouping. So let's say you define, yeah, you only need three groups or five groups, based on how long is your list. So for example, if it's longer list, you can use up to five groups or seven groups. Or up to ten groups because you have ten fingers, okay? Each group, there could be three to five items. And then you can put maximum of ten items because the same you have ten fingers. Then each item provides, must provide a key linkage to the next item. So that if you forget one of them. You you still get to uh know the next item in the line. Because you put them into groups. If you forget one group, you don't, you you will not forget the second group. Because you can forget the whole group, but it's okay, but it's a risk type of specification. So what happened if you have a long, long list, a very long list? And then uh there are three parts on your fingers, the top part, the center part and the bottom part. Separate by three lines. And then each of them, if you can put five items. One finger can put fifteen items and your five fingers can enough to store seventy five items. So things like this, okay? Oh, uh next, okay, I will share some common category that we can use. We can use whether the item exists in the air, land and sea. The air, land and sea basically constitutes everything under the sun, everything in the entire universe. Okay, next is you can use environment that is familiar to you. Home, school, office, zoo, park, stadium, mountain, store, car, desert or any environment that you can think of. And then you can categorize them based on either is a noun, is an adjective or is a word. And others just be creative. So for example. In this right, I need to remember this based on the cat, using the category method. I can think of air, the rocket is in the airspace. Constellation with our stars exist in the sky and nail where they need to send through air mail. And then pop where we pop a firework or the birthday party thing. The birthday proper, it goes into air and present is also sent through the. You, so this is in the airport. So land, park and we have cobweb. We have maze, we have marker and we have zero. So for the sea, you have cucumber, white cucumber, you can be sea cucumber. And clam, you cannot see horse, bread and reef. And then you might think why uh bread and reef I put it in the sea. Because bread you can imagine that it looks like seaweed. Reef, you can imagine like corrose and that you can pack in the sea. So just be creative when you visualize new things. You might think it is very counterintuitive, why I need to think of new ways to remember things. And this new way I need to. And this new way I need to still need to remember one more way to remember this new thing. That means I remember two things. You can try this, it's very effective. Because many, many years ago, when my mom was sixty two or sixty three years old. I tried this, if this three methods on her and it works on her. So I know this method really works. Okay, uh, next. Ah, uh, just to recall one point. I shared earlier, learning is an output only when the output we remember is not input. So by thinking of new ways to remember things is actually an output. Another method is, uh, this is the method I shared earlier category. So the next method is. Okay, you can try, you can define two to three categories that contain the list of words on the left and see if you can remember all the words. You can have one minute to try, yeah.
Uh, thanks Jason for that. Um, can I make a quick announcement, uh, to. To the Muslims in the group, um, time for you to pray because the call for prayer, uh, just started. So if you want to quickly go back, go off to pray, uh, be my guest, just, uh, go, go out. Uh, don't worry, the whole thing is recorded, so I, I will, uh, upload the, the recording link later, alright? So, okay, back to Jason. Uh, yeah, uh, over to you, uh, just want to make that quick announcement.
Yeah, okay, so, uh, you can try, use one minute to try on your own and use the second minute. To try to recall the things after you put into categories. And then you tell me whether it works for you. I put three minute on my count, on my timer. Uh, if you have any questions, please feel free to open your mic and ask me, yeah. I hope the things I shared, uh, you can either. Um, recall based on your past learning experiences, whether it resonates with you. Yeah. Okay, it's one minute by now. I hope you have the two or three categories that you come, come out with. And then the next minute. You turn over your paper and then to see whether you can recall all the ten words here. If you couldn't recall, then turn over your paper and look at it again. You, if you do not, if you are not able to do it in your first attempt, do not worry. Because, uh, this matters, it could be new to you and require maybe two or three times of practice. After you are well versed with the method, you will be able to do it. You can trust my words on this. Okay, now the second minute is up. Now you, any, anyone of you would like to share? How many words that you are able to remember and what category do you use? How was the experience?
Very useful. Uh, let me share, uh, while waiting for the rest to, uh, to, uh, to play around. Um, Jason, how I did it, I did it based on four groups. Then, uh, zigzag is the odd one out. Because, uh, somehow I cannot put it based on any other groups, uh, together. Uh, and then, uh, for the remaining three groups is basically, uh, based on, uh, similarities. Like, uh, pen, coin, button, these are things that you put in the, in the pocket. And then bounce, bet, curl, these are things that you do on the bed. And then, uh, mouse, maze and mouth, uh, these are surprisingly, everything starts with M. So it's pretty easy to understand, to remember. So yeah, based on your method, it, it works.
Okay, then, uh, I can give one suggestion, you can put a zigzag under mouse. You know, because you.
Ah, yeah, the, the tail, yes.
Yes, correct.
Correct, okay, yeah, true, uh, then it's three groups, uh, instead of four. Yeah, it, it, it is up and make things easier to remember, correct?
Are there other person, are there other person want to share on this?
Yeah, there's twenty three of us in the hall, uh, minus, uh, kin, uh. So who else would like to share how you handle, uh, the groups?
Okay, maybe, uh, can we ask? I believe, let's, let's say half. Everyone can remember, who, who can remember five of them, five words? In just like two minutes. Doria, can I see like, yeah, although they don't open video like, okay.
Oh yeah, they don't open video, but if you, uh, okay, Aisha is here, um. Yeah, Aisha, you want to unmute yourself and share what, how you memorize?
Um, I arranged the words based on the first letter. Because most of the words have the same letters, like, uh, we have four Bs, two Cs, three Ms. Only P and Z only, uh, P and they have one word. So I remember saying, uh, for this, what, what is like, bum, bounce, bum, bounce, bet, button, coicur. And for M, I remember, uh, for much, but meat, meat and mouse, I forget about it. Uh, so I just forget three, uh, three words, which is butter, milk and mouse, like both of the words I remembered it.
Okay, that's good. Okay, then, okay, if you think this category, you like remember seven words or. Fewer words, right? It may, maybe you think that it's not so effective for you, then you can try the second method. So second method is by drawing. When you start to use your pen or pencil to draw on a piece of paper. When you draw, don't think whether it's logical or not, rational or not, whether it happens or not. So, uh, you can draw funny things, you can draw things that are unimaginable. Maybe that doesn't exist, yeah, just use your creativity, there is no rules in this. Okay, because this drawing only you, you see, you draw, you use. Okay, so the next is drawing, it's good for sequential list. Where you need the things to be in a sequence, so you draw, you link the items one by one. And the hands-on drawing is useful for you when you are a kinesthetic learner. And we in, this reinforce the visual memory and most important, your drawing need not to be pretty. Okay? So let's say, okay, uh, sorry, pardon me, I don't have a pen to draw, I just find pictures in the internet. So I have a rocket here, then followed by a constellation. And then a seahorse on the top right. At the tail of the seahorse, you see a cobweb. Then the reef. And followed by a brick is the hair of a lady. Which leads to the park. The maze, the marker. The pop, squirrel, clam, meal. Cucumber, present. Now, at the first class of it, all the pictures doesn't make sense at all. So let me how to put the things together. So the first thing is you draw a rocket, it's in the space, so if you see the constellation. Then next, you draw a seahorse. Probably all the stars come together, when you link the stars, it look like a ship of a seahorse. So we got, let's say we have like Taurus, we got cancer, that looks like a crap. So Taurus is like a, a bull. Then we have Scorpio, that looks like a scorpion. So it can have a seahorse. Then at the tail of the seahorse, there's a cobweb. And that looks like a reef because Christmas, that Christmas is coming, when we go into a store and bring back the Christmas reef. In the last year, there are cobwebs on it. And this reef, right, it can actually, is actually is a hairband, is a rubber band. There we use to tie the hair of the girl. Then the, the hair, the girl is tied to bit, it look like the willow trees where they have long, long leaf. Hanging down in the air in the park. And the park with all these willow trees, when they group together in the bush, right, it looks like a maze, like a maze runner. Then we are in a maze, you need a map to navigate through the maze. So you have a map and you use the marker to draw important landmarks. And then you use a marker, you need to pop up the cap of the marker. Okay, and then the suddenly the squirrel come of nowhere, run around in the bush. And he's screaming all the way running towards you because there's a clam on the tail. Clicking on the tail, which is very painful for the squirrel. And then you see the squirrel bring a male, the emblem of the male is cucumber green color. And it's inside the emblem, there's a present for you. So something like this. So this is a drawing method. Drawing is just based on drawing. As in earlier, I use a story to reinforce this method and so that it grew into your mind. Okay, so can you see how powerful is this? So now it comes to the. Method I'm going to share, okay? Uh, this one you, when you have time, see as a ten words in the list here. You, when you have time, you can try to draw it to see whether this suits you, whether you are kinesthetic learner or not. So don't worry about the drawing, it's not nice, it does not look like a mouse or your. How to draw new, yeah, so just be creative. The next storytelling, so, uh, these are the six storytelling techniques here. This is, this is an individual cause on its own. So I'm, uh, not going to share here because if you're going through this, it's going to be very long. So, uh, just roughly time place indicator to, you have a scene that in a, in a studio. You know where is the time, where is the place where the actors is acting. So, so that to form a picture in your mind, this happened that in the, once upon a time, this when in the future, this when currently. And where is the place, present tense, when you tell a story, you use present tense. So you yourself and your audience immersed in the present. And they can feel your emotions, feel what the actor is feeling at the present moment. And next is what the take off is like, you are on the plane, you jump off from the plane, you open the parachute, you just jump into action itself. So a lot of, uh, unnecessary things that is not related to your story. You don't put inside, lots of lots is lots of senses. So language of the senses, I hear the smell, I'm sorry, I smell the. Donuts coming out of from the hot, I for hot oven. And then it makes me recall back in the, back in my childhood. Where my grandmother take out some donuts for me, so things like this. So you put a lot of senses inside, as I taste the donut, it just feels so good and so sweet. It brings back some memories, so warm, so touching of my late grandma. So these are the things you want to put inside, you use your number six sense. Okay, then next is, uh, be vulnerable, where you share your real experience, share your real feelings. Even it could be embarrassed moment of yourself, then you can use some suspense and surprise elements. So here comes the storytelling approach is good for sequentially, but you have to be creative. You make up story of your own. Just that, uh, you need to practice more with this method because it's. Require some creative creativity in you. But by far to me, this method is the most effective, at least to me. Because this is like you watch, watch a movie, you watch a drama. And then you tend to remember what happened in the movie. It's just like a flashback of the whole film in your mind. You remember what are they doing, what did they say, how did it happen? How come the struggle come off, how, where the police car come out, where the robust is going to escape, what is their escape plan? So you remember very vivid things from the movie, yeah. So you can incorporate some, uh, your emotions that is absurd, funny, horror, frightened, threatened, surprised. Helpless, delighted, lonely, love, loss, despair, anything. But please be mindful when we are teaching, uh, young children, we don't use obstin and vulgar inside. But if you are learning on your own, you can, because this only happens in your mind. Yeah, so, uh, and when you are, you are speaking in a public audience where they cannot accept such things, so do not use such elements. Okay, so next. Oh, for this example, close remember is your story is only in your mind and no one knows about it. Okay, these are some of the feeling list I got it from the internet that you can use. And then some of the body sensation, you feel it. Okay? So this is the story of the fifteen words here. So I sit on a rocket. Traveling through the constellation of a seahorse that curves. Uh, the stars in the space look like a big cobweb surrounding me like a reef on my bridge. So I am a girl, I am sitting on this rocket. Travel across this vast space and I saw a constellation of seahorse. And the whole universe just look like a cobweb surrounding my whole, surrounding my spacecraft. Just like the reef on my bridge. So you, you picture this inside your brain. Then the next. As I park here, the park is used as a word and is not as a noun. So as I park my rocket, I realize, oh God, I have lost myself in this space maze. And I pull out a marker to draw on the piece of old map. Out of nowhere, so I have this squirrel companion, you imagine the squirrel in the space suit. So with the helmet, pop up my lawyer's squirrel companion, you remember the Guardians of the Galaxy? So, uh, the main actor, the male lead has a raccoon. So me, I have a squirrel, so hopping all around shaking in pain from the clam gripping onto his tail. His mouth is holding a meal in cucumber green color, a present passed down from my space explorer ancestor. So you can see the whole story here to adopt. It just doesn't make sense because it's so not logical, it's out of nowhere, it's like science fiction movie. But it doesn't matter, just remember you are a child when you learn things. And that will open up your mind and you are more receptive to matters like this. So with this, I have highlighted in yellow all the fifteen words. Then you can try to recall based on this story, whether it works for you. Because in the next exercise, I want you to create a story of your own. To remember just ten words. So as you read through the story, you. I will give one minute, as you read through this story, you try to picture, visualize this whole image. And the film inside your mind. And the film inside your mind with the sound, with your hearing, with your taste, with your touch and with your feelings inside. And then when you open your eyes. You check how many of these fifteen you tick for each one of them that you can remember. Okay, one minute is up. So I hope you try the exercise. I wouldn't ask people to share because I understand uh, some Muslim friends are still praying. Okay, so using the same ten words, you try to make up a story on your own to see. If these ten words. How many of them you can remember? Just remember your story, don't need to make sense, you can incorporate surprise, happy, funny. Just be creative as you can be. So for this, for this method, I will give you like two minutes to try it on your own. Okay. Can I have someone volunteer to share their story? Otherwise, I will pick a name and you share your story. So maybe can I have. Meng Xin Yue.
Yes, I'm here.
Have you tried it or you haven't finished your story?
Uh, uh, yes, I, 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 I will use three words. Uh, the mouse, uh, milk and, and mouth.
Oh, so these are the words that uh, you couldn't remember or these are the words that you can remember using the story method?
Yeah, uh, these, uh, these, these words are, uh, are the, uh. At the first, uh, first groups, the, the, the first group that I category. So I use the, the three words that could help me uh, remember better.
Also, you are using the grouping method, you find the category method suits you better.
Hmm, yes.
Okay, yeah. So uh, you see different people, they have different methods. So it's okay, uh, then uh. Maybe, maybe I try another person, uh, thank you, Xin Yue.
Okay.
Can I have Liu Ping, Liu Ping Wei? Okay, no problem, uh, I move on. So uh, this is a story that I have written. So a mouse with a zigzag tail is holding a pen. You could be, say, you could imagine this mouse is very hungry. So this mouse zigzag through, zigzag through the streets. It can something like this also, then holding a pen, uh, because he wants to sell the pen for a coin. But accidentally, the coin has fallen to the milk. So you can have another version of stories, just, just, just be creative. So what you see is one version, what I. Tell earlier is another version. So this hungry mouse zigzag through the streets, holding a pen to sell it for a coin so he can buy milk. Then next. After he get his coin, he get his, he get his food, so he drink the milk. He poured the milk into his mouth and then this milk has amazing power. He can bounce off from the floor all the way to the bang bed. But then he realized with his magical milk. It makes his body feel freezing cold and so it closed itself into a ball. And clinging tightly to the button on his shirt. So just a simple story and you can remember the ten words. For this method, if you listen my story, it may not resonate with you well. Because this is my output, you need to try with your own output, then you can remember it. Okay, uh, later I, I will, I will share the random word generator for you. So that you can try it on your own. Okay, later I will share with Doria, because I couldn't find the chat here. Okay, next, uh, periodic table, ah, Aisha said, mouse ran, like. Sorry, I lost the chat.
This is at the bottom, I think, um, there's a, a conversation button that you need to click. It's at the bottom of the web back screen, uh.
Oh.
I think should be at the bottom, top right, uh, bottom right corner, uh, there's a conversation button, yeah.
But uh, you still still that see the Rila Kuma there.
Yes, uh, I saw the Rila Kuma back.
No, why? Because I shared a full screen representation mode, then I lost the screen. Okay, so.
Okay.
So Aisha said. The mouse ran in zigzag, took my pen in his mouth, then he bounced and throw on the bang bed, I threw a coin and spilled the milk, yeah, good. Then Ya Qian said, a cold mouse. Use the mouth to hold, use the mouth to write a zig. Then bounce on the bang bed while drinking milk and then he threw the coin and. His button, yeah, that works also. So things like this. So as long as you are very creative, right? This story belongs to you and you yourself will remember very well your story. So I think time is running out very fast, I shall go through uh, the last piece of my presentation, yeah. So uh, this is a periodic table where we use to study chemistry in the high school. Then uh, we can try to remember the first twenty elements. A simple example would be so high. We start from hydrogen, high, hell berry, the actress. Then this give us the number, the first four elements, hydrogen, helium, lithium, barium. Followed by is B C, so B C is boron and carbon, oh, no more problem, Ping Wei, no problem, yeah. So boron and carbon right now, not N O W, so N nitrogen or oxygen. So the fifth to eighth element in the periodic table, then you may leave your phone number. So F for fluorine and E for neon. And name, no naming, so for name, so N A is sodium, M G is magnesium. Else, else is otherwise, else would you like me to pass a message? So else is like, you see sounds like, so I use aluminium and silicon. So this gives us nine to fourteen, the next number fifteen, sounds good. Tell her P S, so P S is what we use that some kind of uh, text that we forgot to put in the main message. So P S. Clap, clap is a clap, cancer, Superman, so clap call from Scandinavia TV corp. So it's a TV corporation, TV studio who want to invite Helly Berry to film in the movie. So clap, chlorine, argon, potassium, calcium, call from Scandinavia TV corp. So Scandium, Titanium and Vanadium. So this, like this, we, we finish the twenty elements. So I'm not sure it's effective for you, but this is a story I come up with, so you can try on your own. Another version of stories longer, but I wouldn't go through that. So uh, you can scan show on your own. Uh, by the end of this session, I will share the slides with Doria. So you can look through on yourself and then you try to explore which of, which of these do some experiment, whether it's effective for you. But it's just for remembering text, so new numbers, numbers, we don't have time for today, formulas, yeah, so different things, you need different ways. Okay, then uh, this method is the ele- uh, electro negativity table. From the most reactive to least reactive, I remember this from my chemistry teacher. Because I, I used to study in Chinese school, so he taught me as a. Jia na ke mi ni xian tian tong gong ying qing, is like. You are a guy, but you married to the girl's family, it's a beautiful girl. And then you need to give dowry, you pay the money and then you bring your brothers to fetch the bride. So this is how we use sounds like to remember this uh, electro negativity table. Okay, so uh, for English, yes, I searched online, there's a mnemonic. Please stop calling me a zebra, I like horses, can I call anyone C V goal? So for potassium, sodium, calcium, magnesium, aluminium, then zebra is zinc, iron, lead. Hydrogen, copper, silver and gold. Yeah, so by making a sentence like this, you can remember things like this, this is like how we memorize the planets. How we memorize the order of operations in maths. So uh. Need, okay, this is a video again. Okay, uh, maybe, okay, this video link I will share to rest well, you look when you have time. So the basically this video shows a clip where people passing the ball. You need to find, you need to find, uh, you need to count how many times. The players wearing the white shirt pass the ball. And then you will notice something and it's easy to miss something you are not looking for. So coming back to how we learn is if you are not looking for something in particular to learn. When your mind is not focused, you are not conscious, you don't know what you are trying to learn, it's easy to miss out the important points. Yeah, so this movie is about, uh, this clip is about selective attention. We need to direct our attention, focus on a particular thing when we study. There's a technical Pomodoro technique and you can buy the tomato. That every twenty five minutes, you take a five minutes break for four cycles, you take a longer break. Yeah, then uh, finally, I would like to leave you with this quote. Uh, not even children, even for adult like us, so when children or people lack curiosity and the desire to explore. They lose interest and the ability in learning. This may lead to psychological imbalance, ultimately causing them to lose the courage and capacity to keep moving forward. In this journey to pursue knowledge. Okay, so we must always uh, stay hungry, stay foolish, the famous quote from Steve Jobs. And always be curious and have the desire to explore and experiment. So a child's curiosity is the greatest driving force on their path of growth. I realized as I grow, as I grow up, my curiosity start to fade off, not so curious like a child anymore. Because there's a saying curiosity kills the cat. But if we, if we are curious in a good way, this will help us in learning. And we start to get the learner themselves to, to automate the learning process on their own. Rather than we keep feeding them with information and they, they are not interested in the information that we feed them. Yeah, so if we estimate their curiosity, we assume their interest and their creativity. They will start to look for knowledge on their own. Ultimately, this is the aim. Because no teachers can stay with the students forever in the lifetime. At some point of a time, we leave our teachers and we need to seek our own knowledge. That's how humans grow up. And every step of progress is a child's growth and is worthy of encouragement, so do not discourage them. So finally, I will end this session with start with why, why do you become an educator? Why do you become a teacher and how do you plan to teach your students, what are you going to do for them? So this come from uh, interview, a podcast from Simon Sinek as well. You can't remember all your teachers, but you remember the ones that had an impact on you. That's what it means to live on beyond your own life. I hope with this. You, all of you will become a teacher who will be remembered by your students because you have lived their impact and make a difference in their life. Thank you.
So much Jason for that, uh, I think um, guys, if you could join me in uh, giving uh, Jason a virtual clap. Um, so um, very. I would say inspiring talk, um. Key point is, I think uh, what Jason you're trying to highlight is that in a world where things get uh, easier to be remembered. For example, having a phone with uh, your calendar functions, your notepad functions, your task functions. Everything has been outsourced, uh, it is even more important for us to uh, master this. Uh, memory techniques, number one, and number two, uh, teach our students how to, to master it. Uh, because um, you cannot rely on your tools and apps and platforms forever. At the end of the day, it's still you and uh, the knowledge processing it. So that's my main takeaway. Uh, from, from the whole session itself, um, do not fall to the trap of over reliance on, on our apps. So uh, guys, um, I think another point that I want to highlight is that. Uh, Jason was originally scheduled for probably thirty, forty minute session, but uh, Jason. Uh, passionately shows us like one and a half, one hour forty minutes to be exact of uh, sharing. So really thank you for, for your time, Jason, especially on a Sunday evening. Where you're supposed to be, you know, resting before you start uh, your work. So guys, uh, let me open the Q and A session, uh, I'm while waiting for you guys to have uh, your question. Let me start off with my first question, Jason, um, why do you? Why would you like to share this today? Because I think um, it's not easy for somebody uh, who has a lot of experience. Uh, you zoom in on this one. Uh, you zoom in on this one particular component on memorization and, and learning.
Okay, uh, first to answer your questions. Uh, you remember when I mentioned that in all my schooling years, I, they are.
Yep.
Friends of mine who get better grades than me, or they are friends of mine who don't get, who get lower grades than me. And I can feel that they are very, very hardworking. They work very hard. They do their homework while I copy their homework. They make notes. I took their notes. I photocopy their notes and, and I sleep in the class. But I score better than them. So I, yeah, 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 people like this. Of course, there are people that I can never reach their level. Okay, so we are always in, in the bell curve, in the, in the part that the most people are. And then I feel that, uh, I have many, many teachers in my life. They are very good one and they are not so good one. Which, which does not seem to have any interest in learning. So I feel that learning should be a joy. Learning should not be a chore. So we have to engage the learners, stimulate their interest. And then I, I don't like to use the word study. I like to use the word learn. It, it gives a framework to our mind that we are going to the learning. And then one subject, I feel that. Uh, the school could add to their curriculum is that learning how to learn. This is so important before we learn all the content. In school, while we just take information and we just take up information during exam. So learning how to learn is, is a fun approach to learn things in a better way. Yeah.
Thank you, Jason, for that. I think, yeah, I agree with you very much. We need to be con- conscious of. Uh, how we learn in the first place. Uh, and there's a term for it actually, uh, meta connection. Uh, the awareness that, uh, how you think, uh, thinking about thinking in short. So probably something that we can, you guys can search after this. Um, any questions coming from the floor? It's a very quiet hall. While waiting for, yeah, Jason was saying.
By the way, thank you for asking me the question because I begin the session with a why and an any for why. So this why is very important. I hope by sharing this information, right? Uh, you can start with your why as well. So that students don't feel discouraged in their learning. Because those weaker students where they are kind of like bullied or even like. Uh, scolded by their parents and teachers, they will feel even demoralized. This becomes a. A vicious cycle and they start to lose confidence in themselves and it can bring them trauma towards their whole life. And then for the better student, right, they score so well every time. This presents another problem where they couldn't face adversity in the real life when they start to go into the workplace. So both they need to strike a balance. So like example, like when we compliment someone, we praise someone. You don't praise, yeah, you're so brilliant, you are so smart. Uh, good luck to you, all the best. So it's like we put a luck element in your wishes, in your greeting, and then you praise someone because of their IQ from what they have. Uh, inherited from their parents or their inborn is a blessing from the God. But we praise them for effort. Yeah, you hardworking, you should do well this time. I believe in you. Something like this. Yeah.
I think. Anyone, I think somebody actually on, on mute, uh, wait, anyone has any direct question? I think Ken shared something just now. I think he went off already. He was thanking us for the session. Uh, I think I want to thank him actually, uh, morning, getting up so early in the morning just for, uh, to, to support you, Jason, for, for your session. Yeah, didn't manage to see the message, but then he sent something just now. He went off already. So guys, anyone want to ask questions to Jason?
Uh, he's a great teacher. Inspire me a lot to, uh, took on this path like, uh, like want to. Share the kindness, yeah, because he's a person who, who wrote a thesis based on, uh, using kindness to teach math. He also a lecturer like yourself in University of, uh, UTEP, University of Texas El Paso. So he also teach, teach future educators, teaching teachers how to teach math. Yeah.
I didn't realize there's a London lecturer in my class. Okay, so guys, uh, again, final call. Anyone wants to ask questions to Jason? Okay, it's a very quiet hall. I assume there's no questions to ask. So, uh, thank you, Jason, for the session. Uh, if anyone has any questions, uh, probably I will share Jason's email later. Um, you, I think you can also get Jason's email via his C P, which I have shared on the e-learning platform. Uh, so, uh, Jason, any last words to go before we close the session?
Uh, no. Thank you very much for having me. And also, uh, I believe all of you will be a great and inspiring teacher. In shaping the world and in our future generation. Yeah, thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Jason, for the session. Again, guys, let's give, uh, uh, Jason a round of applause for his time. Uh, um, with us today. I think we benefit a lot from it. Um, there's a lot. Do, that you can let reflect on for the session. But, um, there's the one thing that I really want to highlight that I think everyone should remember. Um, why do you become a teacher in the first place? At the end of the day, it's us as educators helping our, um, students to learn better. Um, learn not only what they need to learn at, at school, but also how they get on with their life. Uh, beyond, uh, our school compound. So, uh, thank you so much, Jason. For this particular session, uh, really, really thankful that you've said yes, uh, early on. And then, uh, that's one thing. And then number two, uh, thank you for jumping in when Casey couldn't make it today. Uh, I think that was quite a sudden change of schedule. And somehow, despite your busy schedule, you can still manage to, to like make the switch and, uh, come over for class. So really, thank you so much, Jason.
Yeah, most welcome. Thank you, everyone.
Oh, okay, uh, Wan Wan, you have, you have raised your hand. Do you have a question? Wan Wan?
Sorry, doctor, could you please hear the slides to us? Because I think it's very useful to us.
Okay, sure.
That's less to.
Thank you very much.
If, if you have a question, you can email me. We'll be happy to help.